My pleasure, please. To the flag of the United States of America. To the liberty which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and the beauty just as proud.
Should I be muted here on the phone? It sounds like there's sound coming out here, too.
I can mute. I think it was just Susan.
Yeah, I think that was Susan saying the pledge.
Susan is here for an hour.
Okay.
We need the phone to record hours.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Call to the community. This is a time for citizens who would like to address the commission on any non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to asking staff to review the matter, asking that the matter be put on a future agenda, or responding to criticism. We had a call to the community at our last meeting regarding the basketball courts.
Yeah, that would be the response to a call to the community. But we did not have anyone today that requested to speak.
Thank you for that. Response to call to the community.
And for that, I think that is addressed by the agenda item that's on here in our continued discussions on the matter.
Thank you for that. Staff reports. Community and Recreation Services Monthly Report. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you, Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. The written report is in your agenda packet. The rec center pool has been open since Memorial Day weekend, and we're off to a good start. We've got a steady flow of people that are coming in during our open swim hours, which is nice to see. People are out there enjoying the pool. It's been very hot, as you know, so they're taking advantage. In terms of our aquatics programming, we have about, actually, 1,200 registrations to date for all of our programming, and we're up to 242 kids on our swim team, which is pretty exciting. It's a great group of kids. They had their first swim meet last Friday, their first home meet, and they've got another home meet tomorrow. So they are going strong and having fun. Our next dive-in movie is on Saturday. It's going to be a teen night at the rec center. Barbie the Movie will be showing, and we're looking forward to that one as well. And for those of you who don't know, Sammy Tez is our aquatics coordinator. Her last day here is going to be June 25th. She and her fiance are moving out of state. He's gotten a position out of state, and they are taking the leap. So we are looking to fill that position as soon as possible and wish her well in her endeavors. For preschool, we've got our June Explorers Camp going. Mache is doing a great job with our little campers. And July session is still registering. And school year registrations are ongoing as well. We've got, at the moment, I think it's actually about 32 students registered for the upcoming preschool year. And we're continuing to advertise an interview for preschool aides. It's been a tough position to fill. Made a couple changes this week to the advertising and salary range, so we'll see if that moves it along and can lock down those positions to help Mache in the preschool room. In terms of community services, the accountability contracts are in just about the final stages of being executed. There are only two that haven't made that full round through everybody, and checks have been sent out to just about everyone for that. So we're happy to give those nonprofits their funding to help them do their good services in the community. Memorial Day was a nice event. I don't know if any of the commissioners got to make it, but Mayor Schoeff served as our emcee and did a great job on that event. And for anyone that's available, tomorrow morning is the flag raising ceremony in honor of the Army's birthday and, of course, Flag Day. And that'll take place on the front lawn of City Hall at 8:15 a.m. Events we've just been continuing to plan for the upcoming year. We had a couple that we met with that is interested in bringing the farmer's market into the city once the new Litchfield Square Park is open in the fall. So we've started those conversations. We'll have another one in July, and we'll see where that takes us. We'll keep you updated. But we've had a lot of interest from the community, and many of the vendors that they're already working with would like to be here as well. Most of them are from the Southwest Valley. So that would be a nice addition, I think, once that park opens. And the temporary public art initiative that we spoke about back in April is on the agenda for consideration by council at next week's meeting. We're hoping that they will approve that $10,000 from our capital improvement budget for us to move forward with the West Valley Cities to secure a piece of artwork or two in Litchfield Square Park. That process takes about a year, so we're asking council to hopefully approve that as soon as possible so that we can start those applications. And sports, I'll let Pat fill you in on updates related to that.
Thank you, Tricia. So last week, we had our Challenger soccer camp at Stags Park. We had 55 kids registered to participate. That's the most we've had up to date. Last year, we had 51, so good to see that they're still getting the participant numbers, even with the beating the heat, as we try to say as best as possible. But they do a good job of making sure that the kids get hydration and all that stuff. This week, Strong Minds Run Club did their outdoor mini camp at Camelback Park. There were six kids registered in that. We did our intro to basketball clinic for our four- to seven-year-olds, and we had five kids registered in that, and that was this current week. And then Coach Pitch, our Coach Pitch season registration did start last Monday. We currently do have 13 kids registered, and we only had seven last year at this time. So we're hoping that that's a good sign of getting more kids to come and get registered and grow that program more. So outside of that, that's pretty much all that's going on in the sports department.
I think the only other thing is, on the council agenda, too, we mentioned at the last meeting that Pat was working with Skyhawks about putting on field hockey, and also we're looking to do sand volleyball. So hopefully council will approve that contract as well, and we'll start offering some of that new programming.
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask about this here, but I noticed the fourth bullet point there about prices increasing. I wonder if there's some sort of quid pro quo kind of thing we can get where they can better-looking facilities, and we could have reasonable costs for facilities. Maybe consider those negotiations. I don't need to speak for your team. I wouldn't be out there moaning while I was, to be honest, nor would Pat or Tricia. That might be a way to mitigate those costs and solve the problem that is Litchfield Elementary.
See where that takes us.
Yep.
Can I also ask, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Gertz. You've mentioned previously, Tricia, that Wigwam was considering changing up their Oktoberfest to an 80s thing. Is that under the guise of traditional things? Do you have any word on what their intentions are for this year?
Yeah, actually, we met with them earlier today, and still the intention, what we're working out right now is the proposed budget that we have is basically covering the cost for us to put on the event, but nothing more than that. And we're having a little bit of back and forth on the gate fees and what's an appropriate price for those. Wigwam has a higher price in mind than we do for just the entry fee, which would only include entry. And then there would be live music, 80s live band, 80s-themed. Don't want to go into all the details, but...
The 80s ship has sailed.
The 80s ship is what we want you to jump on if it happens.
I'm boycotting until Oktoberfest.
Yes, but Oktoberfest is not in the plans.
All right. Thanks for the update. I'll look really funny in my leader hose and see. I should do that just as a protest. Where am I, leader hosing, right?
You might get best dressed, right?
I have to get them to fit again.
But yes, so those details are still being worked out. But yes, the plan is not Oktoberfest, 80s party instead.
Do we have a sand volleyball court in the city?
A Lebo court.
Yeah, I said a Lebo.
A Lebo, okay. All right, I can picture it right next to the basketball court.
Yep.
Yeah, so that would be classes, not a league, so that's why that one would still facilitate.
I'm curious about that. And can I ask, too, how's the pickleball lessons going? Are they ongoing?
Yeah, the last, the spring session ended June 1st, so we were able to get those going. We took the break of the summer because it's just too hot. But we did work with Bess to try to keep these, since we got a pretty good rush toward the end, to be able to hold the spring, to offer two fall sessions to try to get that program up and running so we don't miss out all the way until January. So at least we'll be able to offer those. So in the fall, we are bringing them back to try to offer the kid lessons.
Right on. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Public Works Monthly Report. Presenter Kyle Ames, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Chairman Taddy, members of the commission. Your report is in your packet. Just a few things that have been going on the last few weeks. This is towards the end of the fiscal year, so we're just kind of wrapping up the end of these year projects. The drinking fountain at the rec center, the one that's located in the tennis court, has been repaired after almost a year, I would say, with the backfill replacement. We replaced the chiller, so now it's actually cold water. Unfortunately, as soon as we got it up and running, one of the splitter brackets separated, so it started leaking out the bottom, but since then, it's been repaired, so it's up in full operation. So all the tennis players, basketball players, they all have cold water. I met with Bayer Arms, who's our current security system. They're the ones that installed our badge system and security cameras here, rec center and public works. We're going to be adding additional cameras to Litchfield Square restroom to help with vandalism, theft, all that stuff. During that process, I did have them add security cameras to the Wigwam underpass as well, because lately, we've had an extreme influx of graffiti through that tunnel. Unfortunately, if it's not being seen, it's hard to catch, so we're going to add additional security to the Wigwam tunnel. And that is also to assist for Litchfield Square, because once this does finish development, we start having future development with the project site. There's going to be an influx of traffic as well, so this is more of a security purpose as well.
Well, there are signs in the tunnel that say, you know, it's preventative, not just reactive.
Yep. And there's going to be two cameras, one on each side of the tunnel to catch both sides, and the two stairwells as well. Stags Park restroom remodel, I do have it on here that is underway. As of an update today, it should be finished by end of date Monday. We are waiting for the doors to be installed. Those will be starting tomorrow and probably finished out by end of date Monday. If you guys get a chance to kind of swing by there, with this remodel, it's made a complete difference of that area. It looks really good. I met with our Christmas light decorators. I know it sounds crazy, but this is how early we have to start this. They're putting a prelim design together for us, so once I receive their initial design, make some revisions to it, I will definitely bring it to RPG so I can get your guys' input as well. We are looking at purchasing additional Christmas decorations this year. I'm working on storage solutions. We're kind of limited on where we can store a lot of this big stuff, but eventually I'll get this figured out. The other cool thing that we're trying to do is do permanent lighting on City Hall here, so we can utilize these lights all year round. I know in October, we do Domestic Violence Month, which are the purple lights, so that'll be a big upgrade, Fourth of July, stuff like that. So these will be color-changing RGB lights. Staff and I have been really focused on the last couple months, replanting of trees. I have been very adamant about replacing trees that we have removed or lost during storms. I think we're at a total of 76 trees, including orange trees that we've replaced. I'm trying to hit a goal by the end of July of 100. This is also good for our Tree City USA. They love that we are adding additional trees throughout the year. And we do receive a certificate every year for the amount of trees that we plant within our cities. So I'm trying to step it up this year and see what we can do with it. Stags Park parkland landscape, we finished, I'd say, three weeks ago now. All rock is complete, plant, additional plants, trees. We did make a crossing path as well, so that's finished up. We put some mineral oil on that cross path so it wouldn't break away, so it should be pretty solid. If we have issues with that in the future, I'll look at possibly adding a concrete path. The reason I didn't want to do a concrete path now is because it would kind of break up the look of that darker-colored rock, so we got a crossing path with DG that looks somewhat to that rock that's there now. And then West Coast Arbors, they're finished with the date palm trimming. They're going to be moving into the California fan palm trimming about middle of July, so that should start here pretty soon. Other than that, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sure.
At Stags Park, you said restroom remodel, but you had other parts, like the gazebos and tables and things. Is there more done or to be done?
So the two gazebos have been remodeled. We had all the structural repairs, additional welding done. I don't know if you guys were familiar, but the bottoms were rusting out, so we had those all replaced. Paint, new lighting. I'm working on getting new picnic benches for under there. We have the old concrete style, which are kind of falling apart, so I'm working on getting some new picnic benches for both of those. We did have, I had them install an anti-slip floor. It's kind of a grain, sandy finish, because that does get quite a bit of water from the sprinkler system. And before, the painted concrete was a little bit on the slippery side, so I had them remove that, strip it down, and we did a non-slip. And I also had them do the same non-slip inside the restrooms as well. We had some intensive drainage pipe issues in one of the restrooms as well. The floor was failing, so I had them chip all that out, replace the piping, the drain pipes, and relay the new surface down. New light fixtures, new paint, new outside light fixtures as well. And then, I don't know if you guys are familiar, it was a snack bar at one point. It was never, it hasn't been utilized as a snack bar. We just essentially just use it for storage now, so I had them fill that in as well, the two rolodex stores. It's all one solid surface now.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you, Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. The draft, May 9th minutes are in your agenda packet, and the Commissioners, Chairman would like to entertain a motion. That's great.
No, second. Are there any questions? All in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
There's two ayes on the screen.
And so it is.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Cancellation of the July 11th meeting, regular meeting, pardon me. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Community and Recreation Services Director.
Thank you, Chairman. The July 11th meeting is on the schedule currently. We have, I did poll the Commissioners for their availability for July and August. We have several that are unable to attend in July or are questionable, and the city council has also canceled their July meeting, so any business that might be conducted in July for the commission would still be waiting until earliest August. So staff would recommend that you guys also cancel your July meeting and hold your next one in August.
I think that's a good recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion that we cancel the July meeting and resume in August 2nd.
Are there any questions? All in favor of canceling the July 11th regular meeting, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Commissioners.
And so it is. Public Basketball Courts in Litchfield Park. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's check my notes, but I think I have it pretty much in my head. Just a couple of quick updates on the progress for public basketball courts in this city. When we last spoke, we were discussing the possibility of the courts at Litchfield Elementary School being made available to the public. Pat looked into that with the district, did hear back from them on Monday, and they confirmed that their understanding was that the courts and fields should already be opened to the community in the evenings and on the weekends. So we tested that theory today, but they were closed, so we'll reach out again tomorrow and keep following up to find out what that procedure and pattern is, so we can hopefully have those made open to the public as the understanding is. I also connected with I-SERT Unified School Districts to find out what their intergov is between them and the city of Surprise. They were willing to share it, but I had to do a public records request, so that hasn't come in yet. So when that happens, presumably by August, we'll have some more info on that, too, and may be helpful if there's any understanding between the city and Surprise in terms of upkeep. That might give us some ideas on that as well. Other than that, that's where we're starting, especially since it seems that Litchfield Elementary School should be available to the community, and we'd like to see how that goes first before we pursue any of the other more costly expenses that are involved with actually adding courts. I did run the numbers on the usage at the rec so far for the basketball courts. For the last year, the average for after-school hours, the range is like between two kids and 15 kids. The average is five to seven, five to eight. And then on the weekends, that's only started in April, but the last few months, the range has been same thing between two and seven is the max on the weekends. It's usually four that come for basketball. It's generally on Saturday, not Sunday. Our tennis and pickleballers will come on Sunday, but the court use on the weekends for the basketball courts is primarily Saturday. So it's a handful right now. It's a good starting point, but I think if the school really does open up to the community, that will give us a much better idea of the need and the desire, rather than just our rec courts.
Right on. There's a, thank you for putting together that data, too. There's a few questions. Commissioner Fixx, is that a hand?
Yes. It's my understanding that they would have to pay to use any of the facilities at the rec center. Is that correct?
After-school holidays, whenever school's not in session, kids don't pay at all. On the weekends, it's open to everybody for free, kids and adults. So we're tracking the usage by everyone.
Okay. I think maybe that word needs to get out, and those numbers might grow. I'm sure a lot of the community feel that they might have to pay, you know, maybe a nominal fee or what it may be, a membership or what have you, to use those courts. Just a thought.
We'll keep publicizing. It's still fairly new in terms of the weekend use, so we'll keep at it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gertz?
Thank you for all the work on that, because it sounds like you're making great progress. Did they indicate if this would be a sunup-to-sundown sort of open, or is it...
I think the understanding is, as long as school's not in session and there's not kids on that campus for school-related purposes, it should be open.
Oh, cool.
So we'll try and confirm, because that sounds like that's the district's understanding, but the school's not following through, so we need to see what their school-level understanding is.
And I'm sure you guys probably have it on your mind, too, will probably want to let Hefendel PD know that once, one, that there will be people in there, and that's okay, right? Don't freak out. Also, there'll eventually be an incident in there, and like, you know, be prepared to deal with it. There's going to be people in there, and invariably, there'll be a fight at some point. But like, very minimal, they know that, like, it's okay for people to be in there, or otherwise they would, that would probably be a red flag, like, why are there a bunch of people, like, near the school buildings?
Right.
Do we know what entrance way, I'm sorry, do we know what entrance way we would use to access?
At the school? So the gate by that southwest ball field off of stage brush should be open, and then the one by the cafeteria parking lot and the playground, that one also should be open. Those are the two, yeah.
Thank you.
So a couple things. So I know that all spring, Little League pays somebody to open the gates at between 4:45 and 5:00 p.m. for Little League use. So I don't know, there's ever been any, if Little League's paying somebody to open them, then they're not...
We're going to find out, yeah.
Yeah, then they're not open for public use. Why are we only charging, do we charge adults on weekdays?
We are charging adults on weekdays when the staff is lobbying, or the lobbyist staffs.
What's the point of not making it free on the weekends? Why, are we making an income off of that? Is there a cost to having adults out there on weekdays? If it's always open, that might be an easier sell to the community, is what I ask.
Yeah, I mean, it has been historically part of the revenue generation of the rec center. You get access to the courts, the gym, the restrooms, all that. When the rec is closed and there's no staff, you don't have access to any of that.
And that breaks down as a membership fee or a daily fee?
Or drop-in fee, yes. You can do either.
And then with the elementary school, if we do have access, I think they do, we do need to have some sort of definition of what time it closes. And I would just say, maybe we do the same as our parks. Park hours, whatever. Is it sunset, or is there a time?
Ten.
Ten, okay. So in the winter, it's dark, obviously, in the closing, but it'd be nice if that was aligned, just for consistency's sake, if we do have access at some point.
Sure. Final question. Did they mention the playground, whether that would be open or not?
We didn't ask about the playground.
I don't want to date around...
Yeah, I would say that it probably is, based on how that is, the layout.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how it would be, and I can't recall. You know, they open, especially the one by the cafeteria, there's that playground right next to the base, that's going to be open. That's real.
But right now, it seems that there might be a little bit of confusion as to how it's operating, so we'll try and get to some solid answers from them and get back to you on it.
Appreciate it.
Sure. I second that slightly.
I second that, it's like great progress to hear that. I mean, that'd be a huge benefit to the community to have that available again. Do we have, as far as the basketball courts at the rec center? I would agree, it would make a lot more sense to have it. Not cost, but do we have like a breakout as to what revenue we get? You rarely see adults out there.
I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get it to you. I can tell you that we've already kind of started those discussions of the weighing the costs versus the benefits of having it open to the community.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know that. It does feel a bit arbitrary to have, you know, a cutoff age. But also, you don't want to diminish the membership, of course, you know?
Correct. Yeah, and that's part of what we're weighing too.
Yeah.
The value of the membership, if all of that is open for free. Which is not saying that we couldn't or shouldn't, just where do we stand with that?
Yeah.
And maybe, obviously, when you're weighing things out, weigh out, is it like just make the basketball court free, but still have tennis? Or do they have to be lumped together? But those are things that you're probably considering.
Yeah. I mean, I think it, I personally think it's very difficult to say only basketball and not tennis slash pickleball now, to do that. But that was the start, at least with the kids, because most of the kids were coming to play basketball. Not too many were ever coming with a couple of rackets to play tennis, so.
So that made me think of another question. The open pickleball night, they don't pay for that necessarily, right? Is there an open pickleball night that I misunderstand, or no?
No, no. We have weekends, weekends between eight and five are free to the public. We have staff.
First come, first served.
Yeah, we have staff that comes and unlocks the gates and then comes and locks them back up. Now that it's our summer season, the rec center is open until 9:00 p.m., so it's essentially open till nine.
So somebody could just show up with a pickleball and the, or the tennis rackets at that point?
And we're not charging, yeah.
Wow. Perhaps we'll re-blask those, that as well, when we kind of publicize the, when we get more information and publicize the open Litchfield Elementary School. Sure?
I should know this, but I just didn't look. Is there, are they, do we have like the pickleball paddle holders or like to help?
We did get them. We got the paddle holder recently, and we actually got a rolling pickleball net so that we could have the right size, because most people have been playing pickleball using our tennis nets. Now, those are higher. So we got the rolling one, and we actually have another mobile one that we've had for a while that we can place out there if you want to split the tennis court, one of the tennis courts and have to do that. And we temporarily lined one of the tennis courts, one of those east courts, that way so that you could use the tennis net as a barrier and then have the.
The two different pickleball nets.
The pickleball net, yeah.
That is so awesome.
So anybody that's out there on the weekends, the roller one is out there and you just bring it on over and play. And we have had people do that so far.
I've seen, I've seen that too, driving by. And perhaps everybody on the commission too, we could drive by Litchfield Elementary School and just take a look and see what the access is and.
I mean, as you said, it's locked all the time, yeah.
All the time.
Well, in the summer now, yeah, I mean.
It's so interesting that the district says, no, it's open.
Yeah, I think that's really miscommunication somewhere.
They're not far away.
They said it should be open.
No, it's right there.
I know.
They did finally remove the dead tree on the south side of that.
Yeah, so.
Conformity, kind of holding that as well.
Well, thank you guys so much for that.
You're welcome.
Litchfield Park Square update, presenter John, and John, I'm going to apologize because I might mispronounce it again.
Froch? Yeah.
John Froch, City Planner and Special Projects Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm with the RPG, I've been here at least my third time this year. Last time I was here, I chaired some of these exhibits. This was an exhibit that we used for State of the City, this is Litchfield Square Park. This is just a rendering, I'm going to pass these around like I did last time, that one board. This is just a rendering of what we hope the square in general looks like. We are working with developers on selling additional office, working with Mayor Halsel on that. And then this was an exhibit that you've seen from me before. This actually shows the amphitheater, which is right now is unfunded. So I wanted to give everybody an update this evening on kind of where we're at with things. I'll pass that to you. So you can see the park from, it is a construction zone with temporary construction fencing. The park itself is starting to take shape. We meet every week with Aiken Gardner, it's usually myself, Kyle's there frequently, either him and/or some of his field staff. We met this morning with Aiken Gardner, they're our general contractor that are developing the square for us, all the infrastructure. The, I've got some additional handouts that I think you already have in front of you, I'm going to walk you through that in just a moment. So the plan is that, what we've been telling the public is that most of the infrastructure will be completed around Labor Day weekend. Aiken Gardner, they've got their temporary construction trailer onsite, their mobilization with their equipment. You can see that from basically local things of the square. So the park itself, I'd like to kind of walk you through, this was in your package, but I realized getting ready for tonight that it's pretty hard to read on eight and a half by 11. So each of you should have an 11 by 17 handout. So what I wanted to provide to RPG tonight is just a general update of the park. Restroom building, I'll just call it restroom building one, is under construction. If you leave the building tonight, you can see it from here. So the walls are pretty much up. It's a two-coat stucco exterior finish. The first coat's been applied and I believe the second coat will be, second stucco coat will be applied next week. Just to the, a little bit to the north and east of the restroom building one is the actual playground itself. And I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes walking you through that. I should have had the designer EPS group, is our landscape architect, planner, engineer. Where it says internal street, that's actually Village Parkway, and that's going to be a block through streets. The road's pretty much done, it's not open to the public yet, between Old Litchfield Road and Litchfield Road. There's a seat wall for mom and dad, for parents to be able to sit along the north side of the playground area itself. And it's, they're ghosted in or shaded in, there's four shade sails that will be installed for the park. We own our equipment, playground equipment, parents, kids undercover, especially this time of year. I was here, I think, for your April meeting and asked for your consent on the shade color sale, which you, the last, I think it's, trade name is Desert Brown, I believe.
Sand.
Sand Brown, it's similar to what we have in Old Square. So the, if you look closely, the dashed line of the four shades. If you go through the other sheets, and just a caveat, this is showing the airplane that is unfunded and will not be installed. But that's some other information for you that we've got probably about two hours ago. So the actual playground equipment are on the following sheets. And further direction of our city manager, Matthew Williams, talking to Tricia, Patrick, Kyle. We wanted playground equipment for all ages. So if you look at sheet. The second sheet, down at the bottom, the age bracket, it's in over five to 12 years and two to five years. So we're trying to have something for everybody, pre-teen. The information that I just got from our designer is this handout, which is not in your package, but Tricia and Kyle passed these out. We have a potential opportunity to, in lieu of. In lieu of the airplane, this actually was going to be coming from Germany, from the supplier, and it just became, it was almost a quarter million dollars. And we just crunching the numbers with our city manager and our assistant city manager and our management team. We just felt that that was a pretty hefty price for that airplane. So as I said, that's out. What I just got a couple hours ago is an alternate from our designer. And this is a, it's actually maybe more appropriate for the park, given our history with what airport stage. It's a play structure with essentially a fighter plane. I'm not sure about all the details, like if the terminal building in the back, the climbing structure would be part of that, or if you could just get the fighter jet, what the budget would be for our numbers. Kyle talked to me before the meeting, we probably would not do the spinner, the little spinner on the left side of the first sheet, just for a safety standpoint, with kids getting thrown off the, you spin on that and it gets busy and gets thrown off. So we would work out the details and come back to you. But if this is something that you feel like you might pursue, we can discuss this further with our designer. Get some of those details, like I said. Look at, you know, is this an entire package deal with the supplier, with the vendor? Or is this something that we phase in? Does RPG like the terminal, do you like the concept with the fighter jet? Our idea with the budget is that as we're nearing the end of the construction phase for the infrastructure for the square, there might be some leftover money, contingency money, where this facility is significantly cheaper than what's on the concept plans, where we could potentially have funds available to implement this. This would basically go underneath the eastern shade sail roughly where the plane is depicted on this.
What's the ground of the playground?
Yeah, good point. Through the chair, the ground has actually shown, excuse me, on. So it's soft?
Poured in place, poured in place, soft rubber.
Okay. Yeah. If you look at the sheets.
It stays right there.
Correct.
Kind of like a rubber looking, it's a solid surface.
Like on the second sheet, it says playground surface being totally where you're approximately 3700 maybe square feet. The designer actually looks, and the manufacturer for the equipment, looks for safety for kids. And so the set surface, as Kyle said, it's poured in place, it's soft. There is a color scheme that's shown on the first sheet where we're obviously a very lush community. Our colors as a city are in different shades of green. So this is a rough mock-up of what the color scheme would look like for the playground surface.
Question, sorry. Does the chair wall have the little studs for those skateboard sliding on it?
I believe so. That has come up with our discussion, Kyle.
Yep, yes. They'll have the, they're like L brackets, they're not over the side, so no skateboards or scooters.
Sorry, Anthony. Darn it.
So yeah, I was going to ask about the wall too. So you're saying this, like number nine, the wall all the way around the side, that's at a sitting height?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. We have a really good design team, the two planners and landscape architects that were doing your, they put a lot of thought into this. And especially, I was reviewing this with our city manager a few hours ago. And we were trying to provide a separation where, but kind of try to keep the kids inside the playground. So it is a city time. Yeah, I can pass the board through.
I like this a lot. I like the airplanes. I'm interested to find out what the package that they have in terms of using that, using that design scheme for the playground. Also wondering, you had said that the amphitheater is not funded. So are we to a point where maybe we're looking at, well, how much does one affect the other, I guess is my question? How much does a more expensive playground affect having an amphitheater or not having an amphitheater?
Yeah, we can look at that. So regardless, thank you for bringing up the amphitheater. So the, if you go out there, the amphitheater area has actually been graded. And Kyle and his team walked that, it's probably been a couple of months now, to try to get the grade right. What the, if you look on the board, what the. What will not be installed is in actual stage. And so we're talking internally as a team on, as Tricia starts thinking of moving events here, what does she need to make this functional? So we don't have all the details on that, but we can certainly look at from a budget standpoint, what the amphitheater might cost. This would be a functional space, we're just working out the details like on. We've got electrical to the site. This sidewalk, major east-west promenade was poured recently. It's thick enough and wide enough, I think I mentioned this a couple of days ago, we're meeting this year, it's wide enough. Kyle and his people can drive on this, it won't be open for the public to drive on. This will be set up for food trucks. We'll have electric, we already have the electrical pedestals with outlets along this is, and I apologize, I should have given you the streets. So this is Village Parkway, City Hall is about right here. Desert Avenue, Honeysuckle, the restaurant and shop space are down here, the tea house is right on the corner. Honeysuckle, and then Loma Avenue, which is the street just outside of the west side of City Hall. So we can certainly keep looking at the amphitheater and how that might relate with costs relative to the playground, the airplane, if you will.
In theory, could you do a temporary stage structure for specific events and then?
So we've had some internal discussions about looking at possibility of doing a rectangle square, you know, concrete pad, you know, large enough to do a temp stage. They're still in the talking phase. I don't think we've gone to the decision of what's going to happen there.
Correct.
There's been discussions of doing a temporary spot for the time being until we can take allocated funds to potentially build this amphitheater in the future.
Even without the amphitheater, concerts will happen there, festivals, that would be where our stage area is. It just kind of operates the same way as our current festivals where we bring in the rental stages for the time being. We're just, part of what we're trying to determine is whether it's necessary to put any kind of padding down there or whether the grass area is sufficient for the temporary so that it can still get full use when there's not events happening.
It'd be nice if we were doing the pad that it was the actual footing for the future.
Be nice if you're doing the, a pad that it was the actual footing for the future amphitheater. Breaking that up later.
For any future ones of these, can we have RPG commission members and staff as the caricatures on the mockup?
Perhaps one of them could be wearing the tree painting tee shirt.
Yes, sure. I see Anthony in the background painting a tree would be perfect, yes.
We get a lot of, yeah, we can do that. We always, it always cracks us up. When you get a rendering like that and you've got, you know, a Porsche, an Audi, a Corvette, Tesla sitting in the, in the rendering, so that always cracks me up, so. One other point I wanted to bring up, just in general, don't really need any input from you on it. It's just a matter of information, this is called Palm Plaza. This will, it's very extensive work in here, with concrete, tree grates, palm trees. That'll be starting construction probably in July, August. So the park again will, as dramatic as it is now, that'll start to change again in terms of improvement with just how dramatic it's going to be with palm trees being installed here probably in the next couple of months.
Is it an anticipated time when it will actually be open to the public? Like walk through it.
Labor Day. Labor Day weekend roughly.
That's the, the goal is Labor Day.
Yeah, it's going to be tight. There's still construction activity in the square. Aiken Gardner is going to be out, have a presence here probably through the end of the year. But you'll start probably seeing less of their equipment as we're finishing things up.
My kid has been testing your fence lines, they're strong so far.
Chairman Taddy.
Yes, but I'm sorry, Commissioner Fix.
I have a question, Kyle, do me a favor and hold up that picture close to where I might be able to see it. That way Andy and I might be able to see. I looked in our packet and that wasn't in there. Okay, that's pretty cool, I gotta admit. That's a good support of our Luke Air Force Base, thank you.
You want to flip those other pages? That might be helpful.
Are we allowed to send them pictures via cell?
Here's the other part of the rendering.
Okay.
I feel like without the tower, it'd be significantly less fun.
Yeah, the tower.
Like just the,
Oh yeah.
Like the one, original plan says.
I love that, okay, thank you.
You're welcome to climb on. One looks really neat, like from a design standpoint, awesome, but I, I wonder if it would be as fun to play on.
We'll work out those details. Yeah, no, I appreciate the input, we'll work out details and come back and see you again once we know a little bit more.
Can you also elaborate on the spinner? Something, you mentioned something about it being dangerous.
Yes, so the spinner is, Kyle, you seem to have intimate knowledge of that, do you want to talk about that?
So I've, I've seen these numerous parks throughout the valley and they are very dangerous to children. Kids get on there and they start spinning other children really fast, get dizzy and I, just looking at it as a risk management standpoint, it's probably the best thing.
I thought you were talking about this one. It's like the big in the ground one.
Oh, the, the buried one? Those are a little bit heavier, they don't move as, as easy. These ones are, are super dangerous.
Yeah, the one that's proposed as part of the overall, the overall year. And that actually, I found out it has a clutch on it that can be adjusted. Where it, as Kyle said, it's heavier and it's harder to make it.
Yeah, I don't know. Didn't feel dangerous. Thank you for clarifying.
Good move on this. A less litigious society, it would be great. We all grew up with those, let's be honest.
So this is an action agenda item. Our recommendations would be to move forward with investigating the theme presented, the fighter theme.
I think because that just really came in today and it's of interest to staff and it sounds like RPG Commission as well, that we probably won't be making any decisions that, today. I know there were some other play structures too. And I, I don't know, John, if you want to take a look at these as well so that they know the alternative? Because this guy probably won't happen unless there is contingency funding available that's left from GMP six.
We can, we can explore for your, hopefully maybe for your August meetings. Go back to our designer, hey, give us more information, you know, eliminate the spinner. But tell, you know, get us pricing, we'll go back to our management team and our financial people and find out. Is this, as we get closer to finishing up the square, figuring out if we can, as Tricia said, have contingency funds to do it. But we, we could come back to additional information for RPG.
Thank you for that. And maybe that tower, including the tower, like, like Commissioner Faith said.
Correct.
You know, and trading that for something else to make it cost, but it also tied in. You know, so if you want it to flow and make sense, right?
Commissioner Gertz.
I'll stop in a second, I think what Commissioner Schwartz and Faith said. More vertically engaging with the house of the thing, because this looks really cool.
Right.
Like they'll look at it and they'll run around it a couple times and that might be it.
Right.
More we can do that, I think it'll be more accessible.
We're clearly all climbers, so.
Yeah, I think so.
This last picture makes it look pretty cool.
It does, yeah, this looks a little bit more elevated that way too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Quick question. Like I see this one looks like a serpent kind of diving in and out of the sand, right?
Correct, that's located right here.
And like, so I wonder if like, is that, I don't know how that thematically relates, this is the one I'm talking about, the serpent with the ribs. I don't know how that ties into a theme, right? Whereas, you know, the tower could replace that.
Right.
And then you have a, a themed playground, I might say.
With, with playground structures, it's all based off square footage of the area. There's, there's definitely fall zones, so the higher the structure goes, the larger the fall zone has to be. So depending on how tall this actual terminal structure is, that's all based off how much they can squeeze into that square footage.
Can't make it so they can jump from one to the other.
Chairman Taddy, may I ask a question?
Perhaps with some ropes hanging from the shade structure.
Commissioner Fix has a question too. Go ahead, Commissioner Fix.
In our packets, we have photos of play structures. Is that a completely different topic than, than what's at hand right now? Are any of these considered in that area along with the jet?
Correct, thank you, through the chair, Commissioner. These items that are in your packet, I'm holding up the eleven by seventeen copies, it's the same materials that are in your packet. These are actually programmed to be unfunded and installed as the playground equipment. The new information that I just got a couple hours ago is regarding the fighter jet playground equipment.
Sort of speaks to Commissioner Schwartz's question too, where I guess they don't all have to follow or be very closely tied in with the same theme. They could be just playground equipment, is that kind of what we're thinking?
I, I think if we mix too many pieces of playground equipment, it's not going to be a flowing piece. You know, having the F sixteen fighter jet and then having the serpentine climbing net may not be the best fit. I think, I think what we may just do is take this back to the designers and say, hey, we've gotten strong feelings about the ones that you guys presented, you know, today. Is there, is it a possibility that with the square footage, we'll just be able to be placed in this area, obviously due to funds? Cost is always the big thing as well.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yard of the Quarter nominations, presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you, Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. This really doesn't require any action on your part at the meeting. It's just a reminder that the second quarter of 2024 for Yard of the Quarter is coming to a closed end of this month, June thirtieth. We have not received any public nominations. So I am asking you guys to plan accordingly and go out there, take a look at the community. Quarter, or quadrant three is the quadrant to focus on this round, which is Cache, Litchfield Greens and Sunset Terrace. So we'll need a few nominations from the Commissioners. And if you can get those to me by the end of the month, then we can have you guys spend essentially most of July at your convenience going out there to, to judge. And we'll work with the HOAs to make sure that those gates are open for you guys, same, same thing we did last year. And the focus for this go around also is Xeriscapes, these summer months. Xeriscapes, quadrant three, and then this way, when you reconvene in August, we should be able to name the winning home and that'll keep us on track for the quarters.
Copy that.
Can you send us that map again and how to access those gates?
Yes.
Can we define Xeriscapes for everyone sort of aligned, what does that mean?
Xeriscapes is, yeah, no turf, mostly cactus and low tolerant water plants.
Does field turf count as Xeriscaping?
Like ashor turf?
I would think so.
I would take it out, yeah, yeah, because it's not using water.
I think when you had this discussion last year, you did agree to that.
So low water use.
Low water use, exactly.
Cactus and low water use.
Native plants.
Yes, sir.
Copy.
I feel like last year we did Xeriscapes also in quadrant three.
Um.
And then out there.
It, it is, and that's based on how you guys voted to have your focus quarters and how you voted to have your focus quadrants.
So maybe in the future, we reverse the quadrants at some point.
Yeah, that might be, I just had the same thought.
We pick three focuses that would automatically rotate between the four quadrants.
So that we're not always looking for the same theme in the same.
Yeah, you, you are kind of locking yourselves in to the same groups by default.
Yeah, they were just automatically rotating.
I'd wonder if we move one. Can you just make it rotate so we don't have to deal with that improvement? Just make it so it's different every year. Just make it rotate somehow, we don't care how you make it happen. Just make it happen.
You can, I mean.
We can draw numbers out of our heads.
This last go around, it was the village, we can jump to quadrant two, which is I think part of historic Litchfield Park and see where that takes you.
For Xeriscaping in quadrant two.
For Xeriscaping, yes.
Do we need a, we don't need a vote, we could just say, hey, let's do it.
Totally up to you guys, yeah. If you're all agreeable.
Yeah, I agree too, do, we agree on that, everybody?
You don't have to know gate codes.
Quadrant two sticking with the Xeriscapes theme.
You said it was a map of quadrant two.
I will, I'll send you the whole map of all the quadrants. And instructions to focus on quadrant two, Xeriscapes.
Commissioners report on current events. Are there any other questions on Yard of the Quarter, I'm sorry?
No.
Commissioners report on current events. Commissioner Culver.
Nothing to report this month.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Swim team seems to be going well. I have my youngest and my oldest in swim team. Otherwise, nothing else.
Commissioner Faith.
Yeah, just, I wanted to thank Sam for her years of service, if you could pass that message along. I know I saw her at a number of the events, I think all of the events.
She didn't miss one, right? She was always there.
Always there, yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that she is leaving for a very good reason.
Yes, starting a family.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Excited for her. Thank you.
Commissioner Gertz.
I do not have any updates.
Commissioner Fix.
I have a, a good update to share with you all. As you were all, I'm sure, aware about the Board of Freeholders and the city charter that was passed by our voters, has gone to the governor's desk and she has approved it. So our mayor will be making an announcement soon about that. So we made history, so that was, that was pretty cool. That's all I have.
Vice Chair Phillips.
I just want to thank Kyle for the two trees that you planted across the street from my house because ever since that giant pine tree tipped over, I have been wanting trees. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the great job that, all over the city, as always, everything just looks so beautiful and, and everything's just very well manicured and taken care of very well. Kind of struggling with a lemon tree in my yard, I might give you a call, look for some pointers, it's a baby lemon tree.
You're going to struggle a lot because it's, the heat's coming, so.
So I too would like to congratulate Sam, a little sad that, you know, we're losing her, she was wonderful. I don't think she ever did miss a, miss a chance to be out at an event and just a, a really great person to have on the team and it's a shame, but best wishes to her in the future. And looking forward to, did I see, it was Barbie, the movie Barbie?
Yes.
My, my teen is currently traveling, but I'll see if my preteens want to go spend the night watching the Barbie movie at the book.
Saturday, Friday is official meet.
Other than that, that's it for me. So there's only one thing left, guys, because we don't have any topics for referrals to city council.
I moved it, we adjourned.
I'll second.
Are there any questions? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So let it be.